I'd like to call this December 10th Regular Council Meeting to order, and it's our last meeting for the year. Would everyone please rise for a moment of silence? And let's remember all of those who passed away during the [inaudible]. Please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Just for the record, it's Mr. Polanski's week to work 3 to 11, so that's why he's not here with us this evening. We do every year, we have the honor over the last several years to have Rosemary Mignoni Stucksky here to entertain council and the people at home for our last meeting of the year for Christmas. So at this time, I want to introduce Rosemarie and Lord.
(singing) This is holy, the ghost is getting fat. Please put a penny in an old maid's hat. Please to put a penny in an old maid's hat. If you haven't got a penny, a half penny will do. If you haven't got a half penny, then God bless you. Well, we have some singing to do today. I hope you all got your, one of your papers. I told the gentlemen outside, I hope I inspired them to sing along. Our first song has to be "Deck the Halls", because the halls of (inaudible).
No, I do not mind at all.
The halls of the Bristol Council and Borough building are absolutely fabulous. The decorating is gorgeous. So could you sing with me, please? Deck the halls with bells of honey. Fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Tis the season to be jolly. Fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Don we now our gay apparel? Fa la la, la 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 la, la la la. Troll the ancient yuletide carol. Fa la 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 la, la 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 la. See the blazing yule before us? Fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Shout the harp and join the chorus? Fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Follow me in merry measure? Fa la la, la la la, la 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 la. Whirl the gale of yuletide treasure? Fa la la, la 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 la. Fast away the old year passes? Fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Here who do you lads and lasses? Fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Sing we joyous all together? Fa la la, la la la, la la la. Heed the sound of wind and weather? Fa la la, la la, la la la. Our next song is "Jingle Bells". I know everyone knows "Jingle Bells", and please feel free to sing parts. You know any other parts other than what's here? If you don't like to sing, you can just la 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 through it, or I'm along, whatever. Ready? Dashing through the snow in a one-horse open sleigh? Round the fields we go, laughing all the way? Bells on our tail ring, Mickey spirits bright? What fun it is to ride and sing a sleighing song tonight! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Fanny Bright was seated by my side. The horse was lean and light, Miss Fortune had seen his lot. We ran into a drifted back, and there we got upshot. Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh!
Aww. Excellent.
That was great. Replacement. Well, we all know that a few weeks ago, we had a fabulous tree lighting ceremony down at the Bristol Wharf. The tree is over 40 feet tall. It's fabulous. If you haven't seen it, please drive down the street. You won't miss it. It's fabulous. And we had a wonderful sing-along at that time also. And one of the songs that inspired Santa to join us was "Santa Claus Is Coming to Town". So would you sing with me, please? You better watch out, you better not cry. You better not pout, I'm telling you why. Santa Claus is coming to town. He's making a list, he's checking it twice. Gonna find out who's naughty and nice. Santa Claus is coming to town. He sees you when you're sleeping, he knows when you're awake. He knows if you've been bad or good, so be good for goodness' sake. Oh, you better watch out, you better not cry. You better not pout, I'm telling you why. Santa Claus is coming to town. I read across a story that my father loved very much. My father was Carmen Mignoni. He taught in the Bristol Wharf schools for many years, and he was an avid reader. And he would many times cut things out of the newspaper. So I don't know where it came from, or why he well, I know why he especially liked it. But this story is called "Santa: An Adventure", with Grandma. I remember my first Christmas adventure with Grandma. I was just a kid. I remember tearing across the town on my bike to visit her on the day my big sister dropped the bomb. "There is no Santa," she jeered at me. What? Every dummy knows that. What? Well, this Grandma was a lot like my Grandma Mignoni. My Grandma was not the gushy kind. Never had been and never would be. I fled to her that day because I knew that she would straighten me out. I knew Grandma always told the truth. I knew that the truth always went down a whole lot easier when swallowed with one of her most famous cinnamon buns. My Grandma Mignoni made a lot of cinnamon buns in her day, too. I knew they were world famous because my grandmom said so, and it had to be true. Grandma was home and the buns were still warm. Between bites, I told her everything about my sister, and she was ready for me. "No, Santa Claus," she snorted. Ridiculous. Don't believe it. That rumor has been going around for hundreds of years, and it makes me plain mad, just mad. Now, put on your coat and let's go. Go? Go where, Grandma? I hadn't even finished my second cinnamon bun yet. Where? We're gone to Kirby's General Store. It was kind of like our 5 and 10. The one store in town that had a little bit of everything. As we walked through the doors, Grandma handed me a $10 bill. That was a bundle of money in those days. It's not too bad now, either. "Take this money," she said, "and go buy something for someone who needs it. I'll wait for you in the car." Then she turned and walked out of Kirby's. Well, I was only eight years old, and I'd often gone shopping with my mother, but I had never been shopping by myself. The store seemed really big and crowded. There was full of people scrambling to finish their Christmas shopping. For a few moments, I stood there confused, clutching that $10 bill, wondering what to buy and who on earth to buy it for. I thought everybody I knew, my family, my friends, my neighbors, the kids at school, the people who went to my church. I was just about out of people when I suddenly remembered Bobby Decker. He was the kid who had messy hair. His clothes weren't real nice. He didn't smell real good, either. And he sat right behind me in Mrs. Pollack's grade-two class. Bobby didn't have a coat. I knew that because he never went out to recess during winter. His mother always wrote a note telling the teacher that he had a cough or he was sick. But we kids knew that Bobby Decker didn't have a cough, and he didn't have a coat, either. I fingered that $10 bill in my hand with growing excitement. I would buy Bobby Decker a coat. I settled on a red corduroy coat that had a hood on it, so he wouldn't need a hat. It looked really warm to me. I think he would like that. "This is a Christmas present for someone?" said the lady behind the counter as I laid my $10 on the table. "Yes, it is," I said. The nice lady smiled at me, but I didn't get any change from my $10 bill. But she put the coat in the bag, and she wished me a very Merry Christmas. That evening, Grandma helped me wrap the coat in Christmas paper and ribbons. A little tag fell out of the coat, and Grandma tucked it in her Bible and wrote on another piece of paper, "To Bobby, from Santa Claus", because she knew I didn't know how to spell Santa and Claus. Grandma said that Santa always insisted on secrecy, so it would be our secret. Then she drove me to Bobby Decker's house, explaining as we went that I was now and forever an official one of Santa's helpers. I was very proud. Grandma parked down the street from Bobby's house, and she and I crept noiselessly and hid in the bushes to his front walk. Then Grandma gave me the nudge. "All right now, Santa," she whispered, "get going." I took a deep breath. I dashed to his front door, threw the present down on the step, pounded really hard, and then flew back to the safety of the bushes and Grandma. Together, we waited breathlessly in the darkness as the front door opened. Finally, it did, and believe it or not, there stood Bobby Decker. 50 years ago have not dimmed the thrill of those moments spent shivering beside my Grandma in Bobby Decker's bushes. That night, I realized that those awful rumors that Santa Claus was just what Grandma said they were, ridiculous people who didn't believe. Santa was alive and well, and we were a team. By the way, I still have that Bible that was Grandma's, and the tag stuck inside the Bible. It was a price tag that said $19.95. Please remember this. He who has no Christmas in his or on art will never find Christmas under a tree. The author is unknown to me. Perhaps someone will know it, and let me know. I might add a special likeness of that story, too, because it's about an eight-year-old. I teach second grade, and eight-years-olds are my favorites. Down the street, right half a block away, the Jewish community is celebrating a festival of lights called Hanukkah. And so would you join with me in singing their favorite Christmas excuse me, favorite song for the Hanukkah season? I have a little dreidel, I made it out of clay. And when it's dry and ready, then dreidel I shall play. Oh, dreidel, 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 I made it out of clay. And when it's dry and ready, then dreidel I shall play. It has a lovely body, with legs so short and thin. And when my dreidel's tired, it drops and then I win. Oh, dreidel, 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 I made it out of clay. And when it's dry and ready, then dreidel I shall play. My dreidel's always playful, it loves to dance and spin. A happy game of dreidel, come play now, let's begin. Oh, dreidel, 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 I made it out of clay. And when it's dry and ready, then dreidel I shall play. Now, one of the most often sung and the most translated Christmas hymn is "Silent Night". I forget exactly what the name, the number of it is now, but any known language on the face of the earth seems to sing this song. Could you join with me? Silent night, holy night. All is calm, all is bright. Round yon virgin, mother and child. Holy infants, so tender and mild. Sleep in heavenly peace. Sleep in heavenly peace. Silent night, holy night. Shepherd's way at the sight. Glory streams from heaven afar. Heavenly host in Alleluia. Christ the Savior is born. Christ the Savior is born. Silent night, holy night. Son of God, love's pure light. Radiant beams from thy holy face. With the tongue of redeeming grace. Jesus, Lord, at thy birth. Jesus, Lord, at thy birth. Well, Ralphie said, well, this is one of his favorite meetings because we get to sing Christmas carols. This is my favorite meeting because I get to hear Ralphie sing a Christmas carol in protective.
That's right.
So. There was dasher and dancer and prancer and vixen. Comet and Cupid and Donner and Blitzen. But do you recall the most famous reindeer of all? Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer?
Reindeer.
And a very shiny nose?
Shiny nose.
And if you ever saw it?
Saw it.
You would even say it blows.
It blows.
All of the other reindeer?
Reindeers.
Used to laugh and call him names?
Called him names.
They never left for Rudolph?
Rudolph.
Join in any reindeer games?
Reindeer games.
And one foggy Christmas Eve, Santa came to say Their best low voices. Rudolph, with your nose so bright? Won't you dye my sleigh tonight? Then how the reindeer loved him?
Loved him.
As they shouted out with glee?
With gleam.
Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer?
Reindeer.
You'll go down in history.
History.
Aww, come on. Take this show on the road. You gotta take this show on the road.
At this time of the year, we always think about people who are not with us or not to be with us because they're in the branches of the armed services. I also think about the brave people just in this very borough who help us out every year, day in, day out, whenever they're called. Our police force, our brave first responders, our EMTs, and our fire police. And sadly, this year, we have one less because of his death. So could you please just stand with me in celebration and thanking them, and let's sing "Let There Be Peace on Earth"? Let there be peace on earth, and let it begin with me. Let there be peace on earth, the peace that was meant to be. With God as our Father, brothers all are we. Let us walk with each other in perfect harmony. Let this begin with me. Let this be the moment now. With every step I take, let this be my solemn vow. To take each moment and live each moment in peace eternally. Let there be peace on earth, and let it begin with me. We never can say thank you enough to all of those people. The most often sung sung at the end of Christmas celebrations in churches is "Joy to the World". Joy to the world, the Lord is come. Let earth receive her King. Let every heart prepare him room. And heaven and nature sing. And heaven and nature sing. And heaven, heaven, and nature sing. He rules the world with truth and grace, and makes the nations prove. The glories of his righteousness, and wonders of his love. And wonders of his love. And wonders, wonders of his love. And then you always, always have to end on "We wish you a Merry Christmas." We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We want some figgy pudding. We want some figgy pudding. We want some figgy pudding and a cup of good cheer. We won't go until we get some. We won't go until we get some. We won't go until we get some, so bring it out here. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Wouldn't be Christmas without you, sweetie.
Everybody would like to hear Rosemarie sing. They can come to Saint Anne's Church. She's there every Saturday night and Sunday. And Midnight Mass for the Christmas will be outstanding. I can tell you that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Rosemarie. Merry Christmas.
Couple of presentations to be made. First is to the Bucks County Rescue Squad by Councilwoman Rodriguez. Kathy, you want to come up, and Harry, or?
Come on, Harry. Got any cookies for me? I heard you were baking.
Betty, you want a mic?
I got one. First of all, I'd like to thank Rosemarie and her singing. She does it every year. It's a great thing. We love to have her come out, and I think it's the best part of December for us, anyway. Everyone knows how important it is for the Rescue Squad. It means a great deal to the town, as it does to its residents. And especially with, I work in the health field, and Lower Bucks is closing their labor and delivery department sooner than we expected, which means that your job's going to get harder because they're going to be transporting patients now to St. Mary's. We don't, we are not going to have a nursery or NICU. It's really sad what's happening over there, but this is why it's so important for us to help out the Rescue Squad in any way we can. So on behalf of everyone here, the mayor, Mr. Dillon, the council, and the residents of Bristol, we'd like to give you this check to help with whatever we need.
We'd like to do that. Bucks County Rescue Squad, representing?
Representing the Bucks County Rescue Squad, I would like to thank the council very much for this check and for the help that we've always gotten from the council and people in Bristol Borough. Thank you.
We can't thank you guys enough.
Thank you.
Just so everybody knows, the council, the Rescue Squad was in need of a new ambulance, and the council decided to contribute $25,000 towards that ambulance. So we're giving them $5,000 a year for five years to contribute to help them make that payment for their debt service. So on behalf of council, and like Betty said, the borough residents, we want to thank you personally for all you do for nothing. So thanks again. Our next presentation is someone that maybe could come up and dance since we had music. Christopher Cattelli, who we're honored to have with us this evening, and Mrs. Cohen wants to do a presentation.
Christopher, can you come up? And you can bring your family up.
Bring whoever you want.
It'd be very nice to have your family with you.
Let's go. Don't be shy. I want to tell you a little bit about Christopher. I think I'll wait till everybody gets up here. Is that everybody?
Her mother.
Want that little guy up here? Come on up here. You were the best singer tonight. Stand right here with us. Okay, Christopher Cattelli is from Point Street in Bristol. I lived on Mansion Street growing up. Tony lives there now. And I remember Christopher and his talent, but I mean, he exceeded all of our expectations. And I'm really honored tonight to give this presentation to him. I knew his dad I knew his dad, wonderful man, and I think we're kind of related, aren't we? Aunt Pedina, Kaz Marys. So I'm really honored. I mean, this is great. So I just want to tell you a couple of things about Christopher before I present the proclamation to him, okay? Christopher's first time on stage was in the then Warren Snyder Elementary School. He was in Toyland. He was in second grade. And he had a great teacher. Her name was Corinne Ryan. And she was inspiring, wasn't she? A great lady? Yeah. A few years later, he performed with the National Tour of Avita when he was in the fifth grade. When he was in Bristol High School, he flew back and forth to Los Angeles where he became a Star Search Grand Champion. And later that same year was the youngest winner to be named Mr. Dance of America. His final year in high school was spent back and forth to New York City. As he made his stage debut featured in the Radio City Music Hall Christmas Spectacular and then in the Easter Extravaganza. I have quite a bit more to read, so I hope you have some patience. He's been very, very busy. That started his performance career where he appeared on Broadway in How to Succeed in Business Without Really Trying with Matthew Broderick and Sarah Jessica Parker. He was also in, what's this, Fosse? And Cats where he was a part of the record-breaking company. He also did national tours of Cats and Guys and Dolls as well as regional theater. He began choreographing when he was 25 and started working on The Rosie O'Donnell Show. Since that time, he has choreographed productions on Broadway, off Broadway, regional productions and television. And he has been all over our country and then he's been to London, South Korea, South Africa and Sydney, Australia. He has choreographed nine off-Broadway shows including Bat Boy the Musical and Alter Boys, which he also directed and choreographed at the Bristol Riverside Theater. Go Bristol. Winning him two Lortel Awards, a Callaway Award and a Barrymore Award for the Philadelphia area. He has choreographed nine Broadway shows including South Pacific for which he was nominated for a Tony Award and most recently for Newsies, which he won the Tony Award for Best Choreographer in the year 2011. He is now directing as well as producing. Production of Silence, okay? The musical is still running in New York and won Best Musical for the Off-Broadway Alliance and was named Time Magazine's top five, one of Time Magazine's Top Five Musicals of 2011. He is also proud of bringing the First Muppet Musical to stage, working with the Henson Company, Emmett Otter's Jug Band Christmas. And I want to give the award for you. This is a proclamation from us, from our town, from our council, from our mayor, from our council president. And I just want to read. Whereas the limits and well-being of historic Bristol Borough are not in its land or its locations, but in how those Bristolians live their lives. And whereas Christopher Cattelli has brought honor to himself and to the borough of his outstanding accomplishments, winning the 2012 Tony Award for his choreography in the Broadway musical Newsies. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Borough Council that Christopher Cattelli be publicly recognized and congratulated for his winning of Broadway's highest award, the Tony Award.
Sorry, I didn't expect that. No, I just, I, can you, you can hear me right? I'm not good at these things, but I will say Ralphie, if you ever want a job. I know people who know people. No, this, I mean, this, I mean, that was really sweet. But with what I've done and I think this means the most to me because Bristol, you know, this is my foundation and you're nothing without your foundation and, and family. And this is, this is it. And I was born here, raised here. My parents were both born and raised here and both sides of the family are from here. And, and I'm proud to be free from Bristol and I, I truly, every time I come home, I will just drive through the streets. I've passed the old house, right past my grandparents' houses and, and I'm just really proud to be from here. And this means the most to me out of anything, so I appreciate it.
Chris, give me the box and then, and you can hold up your plaque. Drop it, yeah, for the picture. Ray's helping to get a job too on Broadway. She's just buttering them up right now. Thank you. Two-step, just a quick two-step. There you go, there you go.
Okay, before we get started with our, Bobby, you have anything?
I just want to wish everybody a happy holiday and a safe new year. And I'm sure it's going to be better than this year. Better because the council has done a lot for this town and I appreciate the voters voting me in as mayor and I enjoy being your mayor. And I just want to wish everybody a happy holidays. Thank you.
Okay, before we get to public participation, okay, let's do that. Anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything? Anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything? What a great way to end the year.
Yes.
That ends public participation. Before we get into number three, I want the manager to pass out, I made up, had the borough make up a list of all the boards and commissions that will expire. This is the entire list, so everybody has a copy of it. Nobody could say they don't have a copy of it, so come January when we have to reappoint people, you know who's coming up and who's not coming up. You want an extra copy for your desk, take two of them.
Thank you so much.
Because we're not going to.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon.
But it's your job as the council person to know who's up and when they're up and what's going on. Okay, everybody has a copy of boards and commissions for the entire year of, for the entire year and for years after that. Okay, number three on the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of 11:12, 11:19, 11:26 and 12:03, to accept the treasurer's report for October, to accept the police and DJ's report for November, to accept the fire chief's report for October and November, and to accept borough inspector's report for November, and to accept the Harb report for 11:26.
Second by Mr. Pezza. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, number four.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant preliminary final plan for subdivision and lot consolidation for Dow Chemical Bristol Properties for Bristol Borough, tax parcel NOS 4522 and a portion of 562-1 and other tax parcels in Bristol Township. According to the plan prepared by William G. Major Associates, project number 7900-24 dated August 27, 2012 and last revised November 8, 2012, consisting of sheets 1 to 10 of 10, subject to the following conditions. Number one, compliance with the items set forth in the review letter of Borough Engineer Gilmore and Associates dated September 13, 2012, and the items set forth in the review letter of the Bucks County Planning Commission dated September 19, 2012, along with the response letter of William G. Major Associates of November 9, 2012. Two, execution on behalf of the applicant Dow Chemical Bristol Properties and the property owner Roman Haas Company and the Bristol Borough Water and Sewer Authority of a declaration of temporary easement, ingress and egress in the forms submitted to the borough and acceptable to the parties. Three, funding and execution of the development and financial security agreements in a form satisfactory to the borough solicitor and the borough manager if necessary. Four, condition upon the approval of the plan by Bristol Township. Five, subject to the application of the applicant to secure any and all permits required for many agencies having jurisdiction over this project, including the borough of Bristol, Bucks County, the state and federal governments, including but not limited to the Bucks County Conservation District and the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. Six, applicants shall pay all review and professional fees in connection with all prior reviews and the reviews in connection with this approval as required by the Borough Ordinance's rules and rejection, regulations. And seven, applicants shall comply with all applicable borough, county, state and federal laws, ordinances, rules and regulations pertaining to the project.
Longest motion I've ever heard.
Whew. Sorry, everybody.
Can I get a second? Second by Mrs. Cullen. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
No.
No?
No.
If you need a copy of this, we have, we're only going to, I'll give you this right after the meeting.
I'm going to issue a letter.
You can fax it down.
Always a letter and that's all.
One, it will be done in two minutes. Number six.
I'd like to make.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize advertising for sale of the Bucks County tax, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. See, you got me.
Number five.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize purchase of 12 radios for emergency management at a cost of $255 each.
Second by Mr. Sabatini. Questions or comments? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, number six.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize advertising for the sale of Bucks County Tax Parcel Number 4-27-10, minimum bid of $20,000 with restriction for use of parking lot only.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Pezza. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, number seven.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to authorize the borough, make a motion to authorize the borough engineer to prepare specifications and receive quotes for equipment and labor for field improvements and renovations which will conform to the new Little League regulations. The borough will purchase the materials.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? The only comment I would like council to know is that we need to act on this immediately, just like we did the big hard ball field. We're going to be redoing the Little League field. And we do have the money set aside in our budget for 2013. Mr. Devine.
Question. Did we figure out if we're going to try to move the softball field so we don't have to, so we can eliminate that base issue? Kids tripping on it as a hazard? Do we talk about that?
Little League field that they're playing on?
Yeah.
The bases are being moved to 70 feet.
Right.
Some are still playing at 60 feet. And that's what I brought up last month. They're trying to, there's something, some kind of a plug that will go underground and they'll have to remove them. But that'll be part of this whole bid package. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, number eight.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the 2013 budgets.
Second by Ms. Trenal. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, number nine.
Mr. President, I'd like to adopt, make a motion to adopt the 2013 tax ordinance.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Pezza. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, number 10.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to impose the 2013 assessment of $360 per unit for the removal of garbage and refuse within Bristol Borough.
I have a second by Ms. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Before we adjourn for the year, I'd like to wish everybody a merry Christmas and a healthy and happy new year and hope to see everybody back here next year and keep moving in the right direction.
And one thing, I'm sorry, under, under, under other business, the Civil Service Commission has appointed to the Oral Board Chief Ken Calusi of Lower Mayfield and Captain Tom Rich of Lower Mayfield. At that point, I had to do that.